Good evening, welcome to the City of Griffin morning commissioners November twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two. We're glad to have everybody with us tonight. We're going to begin with Commissioner Roden coordinating the pledge, qualified Commissioner Tinsley leading the vacation. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Most gracious have my father. We're here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in our performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented, make our solutions fair and just to the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the government of the city and its people. We pray to many.
Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. First item is approved agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Brock with the motion. Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Four zero. Moving to citizens comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments. On the audience, comments should relate to a specific agenda item, not list on agenda for public hearing or through a concern without the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business and members refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, do we have anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Anybody on my left side? Anybody on my right side like to come before you? Right side. Okay. Moving into public hearings. Public hearings were conducted to allow the public comments on specific advertised issues such as resuming ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. First item tonight is to receive comments regarding request to reset property located at nine-five-four Experiment Street consisting of point-two-one-plus from minus acres from medium density residential MBR to plan commercial development, TCD, director planning development, Chad Jacobs will address. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Actually, we're going to call an audible tonight and the principal planner, Michelle Hayes, is going to present this from pretty early this evening.
My people.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
So if you remember from last meeting, there's a few procedures that we have to change due to the new zoning. So subject to House Bill fourteen oh five, I'm entering into the record, Article four codified on UDC, the application submitted to planning and development and the planning and development staff report. The applicant Sky Vision is requesting a zoning change from medium density residential to planned commercial development. The applicant would like to put a convenient store at this location. In order to do so, they will need to change the zoning from a residential zoning to a commercial zoning. By changing this zoning, this will also change the property from a non-conforming use to a permitted use. The subject property is currently located at nine fifty-four Experiment Street, and it's on point-two-one acre tract of land, and that rezoning will apply to the whole point-two-one acres. A few items to note, this is planned commercial with the future land use map at this location. The parcel is in an approved state opportunity zone. Planning staff recommends approval of the request twenty-two dash R E Z dash zero five to rezone point-two-one acre tract of land located at nine fifty-four Experiment Street from the medium density residential to the plant commercial development. And at the meeting last night on November twenty-first, the planning and zoning board voted five to zero to approve the rezoning. Any questions?
Any questions on the board?
Good presentation. Excellent.
Thanks, Gideon.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, would anybody like to address the board, the applicant, or anybody else at this time? Okay. Moving into item two, receive comments regarding adoption of the revised official zoning map of the city of Griffin director of planning and development, Director Chad Jacobs will address.
Yes, this is kind of a housekeeping item for y'all. The last officially adopted zoning map that we have hanging on the wall and then planning and development was signed and adopted in two thousand and nineteen. So as y'all know, we've had a few rezonies kind of come through a since then. So what we'd like to do is just bring this back before you and get a current map adopted. And if that display has further requirements within UDC, we have to have one hanging in our office. So that's essentially all that we have here. Last night at the planning zoning meeting, they voted five oh to approve as well.
Any questions or comments from board members? Can we put that planning zoning map in there about?
There is attached to the.
Is this a public hearing at this time? Is there anybody in the audience like to come before the board for questions or comments regards to this change? Okay. Moving into item three is receive comments regarding required public hearing kickoff. City of Griffin, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand forty-three comprehensive plan update, Director Plan Development, Chad Jacobs.
So we've got a bunch of planning initiatives that are taking place here for the next little bit. So this evening, I'm proud to present to you the consultant that we'll be using for the next comprehensive plan update. We agree to award this to Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. And this is one of the things that we have to do is do a kickoff meeting. We have to have two public hearings pursuant to state law. And the first one that we do is essentially kickoff. So we have here for you this evening Glenn Cony and Colinas Johnson, and they're going to present this to you and kind of give you guys a brief rundown of kind of the process and what to expect over the next year. We have to have this adopted by October of next year in order for us to maintain our qualified development staffs. So they're going to do a quick little presentation here.
Welcome to Griffin. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and city commissioners. My name is Glenn Cony. And again, as Chad mentioned, we're with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood. He calls GMC, but we don't make trucks. We do planning and engineering. So briefly tonight, I wanted to just let you know that this is required public hearing to announce that the process is underway to prepare the update to the comprehensive plan. And there's really three reasons why we do this. One is to let the community know that there is a process and there's a procedure that we go through to develop this plan. We want to also highlight the opportunities that the public will have to participate in this process, and then also get any input from any folks that are interested in what that process is. So first of all, we want to lay out who's involved in this. There is a project team that is going to be consistent of our firm, GMC, and the city staff, who we had a kickoff meeting with this afternoon. So we've already begun exchanging information and set up our calendars. There will be something called a technical advisory committee. Those are primarily your city staff and some other experts who will meet about four times throughout the process to guide us and give us information we need to know. And then a steering committee. We're hoping that you will appoint steering committee of somewhere between eleven, fifteen folks who are very interested in planning, interested in the future of the community, and we'll also try to meet with those folks about four times throughout the process. Public will be involved through open house public meetings. We'll have a series of those throughout. They'll be advertised, and we'll make sure folks know when those are going to occur. Again, we'll have a few opportunities throughout the process. And then at the end, there will be another formal public hearing to review the draft of the comprehensive plan. We'll also have an online survey that we will run for about a month. That will be a chance for people who don't want to come out to a public meeting to participate in the process through an online survey. And then we will meet with the planning commission, and we'll come meet with you all again to give you an update as to where we are before we get to the end as well. Very briefly, a little commercial about us. We are a multidisciplinary firm. We do engineering, architecture, planning. And as you see on the slide there under the Augusta office, myself and Colinas, who is here in the audience, will be seeing the two of us most in this process, but also some other folks. Rhonda Davis is a transportation engineer, and Julian Harper is a planner. We also have a really good team down in Savannah, Ed Di Tomaso is geographic information systems wizard, so he can help us with our mapping and our data. Some of you may know Andy Pippen. He's in our Atlanta office, and he will maybe in and out of our process as well, but he knows a lot about this area, knows Griffin very well, too. So just wanted to give you a quick look at who we were. So background on what goes on with this comprehensive plan. It'd be a twelve-month process. As Chad mentioned, it's due to be adopted by the end of October of two thousand and twenty-three. That sounds like a long time, but there's a lot of work to do between now and then. As you know, and probably are familiar with, there are common elements in each plan. It deals with land use, transportation, housing, parks and rec, and all the topics that you see there on the screen. So that's why it's called a comprehensive plan. It's taking a look at most of the services that the community will be involved in. Why do we do it? Well, we tell them to take a look at where we are now, inventory is what's here today, and then outlines a vision for the future. That's really how it breaks down. And not only that, but we'd like to introduce what those action steps are to help bring about that future. And this is all regulated by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. They have standards that we need to follow. They don't make you do it, but they highly recommend that you do it. And so we're going to make sure you meet that. I want to leave you with that sentence, a long-term plan for how the community wants to grow and develop in the future. If somebody asks you, what is this comprehensive plan all about? That's the sentence that we would like you to share with them, because that really is the simplest way to explain what it is we're up to. This is another very easy to understand slide with a series of questions, why we're going about this process. And then in the parentheses is the formal language we use in the plan. But where are we? Where do we want to go? How are we going to get there? That's your standard planning questions. But then we go farther. What are we actually going to do to bring that about? Who is responsible for doing that? And how is it going to get done? And important there is that we'll leave you with implementation plan, a step-by-step to follow to bring the plan into fruition. And I think important in any effort is to have an annual kind of check-in and see how you're doing, a benchmark checklist as to how that's progressing. For folks who like to look at graphics, this is how we really do it. We collect a lot of data. We'll go through a visioning process. Then we'll come up with goals and strategies, and that will lead us to our implementation plan. Again, I think I'm going to use the word implementation a lot. We think that's important. A lot of people do a plan, it just sits there, nothing happens to it. We think the most important part is the end, where you have the implementation plan, which really lays out who's responsible, what partnerships can be entered into to bring about projects. And then really important to you and the community is how are those projects going to be funded? Are there grant opportunities, other partnerships for funding that can help bring about those projects? And then you have to realize that this plan is updated in a big way every five years, but you can update it periodically if something changes or you get a big change to the community during that time. Couple more slides. I just wanted to lay out really quickly the tack, the technical advisory committee. They have a very specific purpose to give us feedback, as I mentioned. These are the experts on the ground every day. So they'll help us before we go to the public and before we go to the stakeholders and before we come back to you, we'll make sure that we're meeting with those technical folks, that we have the right data, and that they're reviewing everything that we're working on. So that's the technical advisor committee. Steering committee, I mentioned, will be appointed, the representatives of the community that really also share their knowledge of the community. But we're asking them to go a step farther and advocate for the plan, advocate for the process. So they're out there helping people understand, hey, we don't understand what's going on with this planning process. Could you help us? And these folks can be ambassadors for that and really help get support for the plan. I wanted to, before I close, mention the opportunities the public will have throughout the process to be involved. There's many. As I said, we will have open house workshops throughout the process, which we advertise. We'll have the survey that I described a little bit to you. It will be for you, again, with updates and in the planning commission meeting, which are both open, public meetings. On the city's website, we will have a place designated where we have regular updates, project updates for the public to see. The steering committee meetings are another chance for people to hear what's going on. We'll report out what happens at those meetings, and then the final public hearing for the draft plan. I mentioned we have a year, just under a year to prepare all of this. We have to carve off about two months at the end for the agencies to have reviews. So we really are under a very quick timeline, and we're going to stick to our calendar. But after tonight's kickoff public hearing, we're aiming to have our first round of public meetings in February of two thousand and twenty-three. That will coincide with the online public survey being available. So those are our target dates for that. We will start collecting our data already. We're looking at putting together the plan between December and having a draft ready in July. And then, as I said, we'll have a public hearing at that time, likely August. And that will be the time we can convey that over to the Regional Development Center and to Department of Community Affairs for their reviews, and then come back to you for the formal adoption by the end of October. That quickly is what we're going to be up to with the comprehensive plan update. I know I went through it quickly, but the slides are available for you to refer to, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have in the process. But again, I just want to say we appreciate the chance to work with you and looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Cony. Are there any questions from board members at this time? We appreciate you. I'll give a safe trip, Mr. Cony and Mr. Johnson. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank y'all very much.
This is a public hearing at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments at this time? Last call. Moving on to item four, received comments regarding the adoption of the revised city of Griffin downtown urban redevelopment plan, Director Plan Development, Chad Jacobs will address.
Okay, so obviously, we met this morning, kind of went through the plan in a certain amount of detail. I'm more happy to answer any questions that you may have from this morning. Just to kind of wrap up a few things and reiterate, again, this has been about a year-long process that we've been going through this. We had an advisory committee that met four times, and we did two series of walkabouts throughout the city, had a lot of really good input, had a survey questionnaire that went out, got about two hundred respondents on that. And so through all that information, we were able to compile, I think, a very strong document. This will actually be a subcomponent of the comprehensive plan, along with some other planning issues that we've already done. And what we're looking for tonight is to adopt this, and so that way we can get this squared away and move on to other planning issues. If you guys have any other questions or comments, I'd be happy to discuss.
Thank you, Chad. So are there any questions?
Good job.
This is a public hearing. Again, if anybody in the audience like to come before the board for any questions, comments, or statements regarding the downtown redevelopment plan that we plan to adopt. Moving out of public hearings into a consent agenda, we have items five through twelve on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent? Mr. Brock with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor of items five through twelve, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero is the vote. Moving into the regular scheduled, regular agenda. Item thirteen is a consider a resolution to amend the CERF's fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two operating capital budget in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred eighty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and nineteen cents, and also amend the fiscal year twenty-two twenty-three operating capital budget in the amount of nineteen million six hundred thirty-one thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. The motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Is that Mr. Rock? Apparently you have a motion, a second. All in favor for the resolution, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item fourteen is consider a request to rezone property located at nine fifty-four Experiment Street consisting of point-two-one-plus-to-minus acres from medium density residential to planned commercial development, TCD. This is staff recommendation. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. McCord with a second. All in favor of the rezoned, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item fifteen is consider adoption of the revised official zoning map of the city of Griffin. Have motion to approve. So Mr. McCord with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Tinsley with a second. All in favor of the adoption of revised map, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item sixteen is consider adoption of the revised CERF and downtown urban redevelopment plan. Have a motion to approve. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Rock. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item seventeen is consider on first reading amending the code of ordinance to the city of Griffin, Chapter twenty-two, Buildings and Regulations, Article two, Construction Standards, Division one, generally section twenty-two through thirty-one, A and B, Statement of Standard Codes. The motion to approve. Mr. Brock with a motion on the first reading. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand.
Corin is here.
Item eighteen is consider a task order form in the master service agreement between the city of Griffin and Paragon Consulting Group in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for contract management, repair plans, construction, estimate debt administration, and construction observation of the bridge at Poplar Street we discussed this this morning. We have a motion to approve the task.
We have a motion.
Mr. Brock with a motion. Second by Mr. McCord. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item eighteen. Item nineteen, consider assignment agreement with Heath and Lineback Engineering, BCC Engineering LLC, whereby BCC Engineering doing businesses Heath and Lineback would accept the assignment of all rights, title, interest, and responsibilities of Heath and Lineback under its active contracts and task orders with the city following the acquisition of Heath and Lineback by BCC Engineering. Motion to approve the agreement. So Mr. McCord with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Tinsley with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item twenty is consider mea power sales for excess reserve capacity to the city of Covington on behalf of the city of Griffin. Do a motion to approve. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Brock with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item twenty-one is consider the following three nominees to fill the two thousand and twenty-two open ECG board seats. Mr. Derek Hampton, city of Carlesville, Mr. Wayne Jones, city of Griffin, and Mr. Houston Gillis, city of Lawrenceville. We have a motion to approve the nominees. Mr. McCord with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Tinsley with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item twenty-two, we need to change the wording here just a little bit. We need to consider rescission of the September thirteen twenty-two approval of the purchase of the twenty-three Ford F-150 XL in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred twelve dollars and seventy-six cents from Speedway Ford. And we also, instead of purchasing, we need to deny the purchase, two thousand and twenty-two Ford F-150 XL from Southern Ford, most responsive quote, the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty dollars, and amend the budget accordingly because that vehicle is no longer. We have a motion to rescind and deny the purchase.
And Mayor, we don't need to amend the budget if we're not buying the truck.
And I strike that, amend the budget. So we need a motion to rescind and deny the purchase. We have a motion. We have a second. Second by Mr. Tinsley.
Let me just make sure I understand.
McCord was a motion of, yes, Tinsley, the second. Go ahead now.
Okay. Obviously, we're rescinding. Yes. So do we not need the truck?
No. So this is just sort of a very good example of the problems that we are having when we need a purchase. So we did make a purchase back on September thirteenth of a vehicle, and by the time we got into PO the next day, they had already sold the truck out from under us. So we were sitting up here because technically it's still active with that vendor. Jason did find another truck that was on the lot at Speedway Ford, but unfortunately, within their specifications of the truck, they did not show the foot length of the truck bed, and it is not the appropriate foot length. So we can't buy that one. So we didn't know that until today. And so now we just need to not buy that one and find a different one.
But we, so we do anticipate this coming back.
We have already surplus the truck that needs to be surplus. It's old. It's about ten years old now. So we will have to have some kind of replacement. We just can't seem to get one.
Okay. That's what I, that's just what I want to check. That's it.
So we have a motion. McCord second by Tinsley to rescind and deny the purchase. All in favor of that, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item twenty-two, three is consider a TOF with hazen.
We've got to rescind the, we've got to do two things there. We've got to rescind. Oh, they did? I'm so sorry. I beg your pardon.
Item twenty-three is consider a TOF with hazen and sawyer for the emergency action plan tabletop exercise for Still Branch and Hets Creek reservoirs in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. And this isn't a table tennis. It's like a work station.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right. We have a motion to consider the TOF of hazen and sawyer.
Let me give you a chance to tell us what it is. Sorry. I'm not going to act like I know what it is.
Yes. No, it's a, there's two components of it, and it's a, there's two components to this TOF. It's a tabletop exercise, which is where our consultant is going to give us a scenario that may occur, possibly a breach of one of our category one dams. And then we're going to go through the motions of how we would respond to that, organizing with all the different agencies in county, city, and beyond, to ensure that we're taking the right steps to hopefully mitigate, you know, loss of life or property downstream. The other part of it is a workshop where we will review the EAPs that exist for both Still Branch and Hets Creek reservoir dams, and make sure everybody's up to speed on what they entail and what we, what our different roles are.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Brock with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. McCord with a second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. Item twenty-four is to consider a claim for personal injuries on behalf of Felicia Carr.
Fedaysha.
I'm sorry, Fedaysha Carr Montgomery, based on any line of notice date in November two thousand and twenty-two from five E. Rickard, which alleges she sustained injuries in a motor vehicle collision with the city of Griffin sanitation vehicle that backed into her vehicle in nine twenty-twenty-two on Grand U Drive at the intersection of Plac Savo. The claim includes an offer settlement in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. City Attorney Drew Weyland is available to address. So staff's recommendation is to deny. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We have a motion, recommendation of staff is denied. We have a motion to deny request. Mr. Tinsley with a motion to deny. All verbal second. All in favor of the die, please signal by raise your hand. All against, like sign. Four one with Commissioner McCord voting against. Item twenty-five is consider notice of cancellation of contract with custom sign factor for Griffin Spalding Wayfinding Signage Project and notice of cancellation for tourism product development grant agreement with the Georgia Department of Economic Development authorized city manager to execute notices and complete all actions necessary to finalize termination of said agreement. And do you want to say anything on this real quick?
So the agenda item that Ms. Carden did prepare is pretty, pretty involved in what the explanation of this, why we are recommending a staff to cancel these contracts. It is something that we can talk about in executive session in more detail if you so choose, and we can table it now. Since we have executive session listed as item twenty-seven, but if you're comfortable with what's already in the agenda item, you're free to go ahead and vote on it now as well, whichever way you'd like.
Cancel.
Okay. Mr. McCord with a motion for the cancellation. Do we have a second? All verbal second. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you second?
I'm not understanding. Are we table it?
No, to go ahead and approve the cancellation of the contract is the motion.
Yeah, both of them.
Pleasure of the board. I'll second the cancellation, but if we'd like to discuss it in executive session. Do we have a motion, second, we'll call a vote. All in favor of the cancellation of the contract with staff's recommendation, please signal by raise your hand. All against, like sign. Five zero. Item twenty-six is consider a resolution adopting revisions to the main city of Griffin organizational chart we discussed this morning. So Mr. McCord with a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Tinsley with a second. All in favor of the reorganization, please signal by raise your hand. Five zero. All right, before we do executive session, we're going to do the city manager report. All right, before we do executive session, we're going to do the city manager report and city attorney commissioner's comments.
Okay. I sent you an email earlier today that I received from GDOC to let us know that they did a traffic study as requested from us at nineteen, St. ground nineteen, USM state off three, from Howie ninety-two up to the city limits. That's sort of in the big blocks belt Longhorn area. The speed limit changes right there from forty-five to fifty-five, and we requested that you not look at that. And we changed it from forty-five. We felt like it was too fast. They, they didn't agree with forty-five, but they do want to make the change to fifty. So, they are going through the process and getting that done, and we will then have to adopt some ordinance revisions or our code to do that, but I just wanted to give you notice that they had sent that email saying we'll change from forty, from fifty-five to fifty between, so right after Longhorn and then all the way to the city limits, which is about a quarter of a mile. So, that change will be made. I've already informed the police chief, but we will not make that change until Chief, GDOC makes it official. The other couple of things are just some date reminders. City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday. However, we will have our regularly scheduled garbage and recycling pickup. So, Commissioner Tinsley, your district, and I think Commissioner on the board, some of your district on Thursday will be picked up Thursday morning, even though that is Thanksgiving. We allowed the employees to choose what they wanted to do, whether they wanted to take that day off or come back in later that week to pick up, and they want to go ahead and get it done. Also, enjoy a long weekend. The transfer station and landfill will be closed beginning Thursday and will not reopen until Monday. They will be closed that Friday and Saturday as well. Also, we are doing a toy drive right now with Griffin Fire Rescue, so there are bins throughout the city, both at customer service, at the fire stations, at a couple other private locations throughout town where you can drop off a new toy for our toy drive. I think we gave over a thousand toys last year, chief. Yep. That's for our DFAC's office and through the Salvation Army. And then we also will have our downtown tree lighting on Friday, December second, in front of customer service at five-thirty. That has become a big event with partnership from City Church where they sort of host the rest of the night, close down Solomon Street to have Christmas tree lighting. Santa will be here, as well as a lot of other Christmas characters, so that will be fun. And then, of course, our Christmas parade is back in downtown, and it will be illuminated at seven PM on December tenth. So, that is sort of the close of second Saturday jingle and mingle, and we have a couple more days until November thirtieth to enter. If you want to enter a float or vehicle golf cart or walking group, you can do that. And all of those events and dates can be found on the City of Griffin website. We're trying to make sure that we keep up that calendar that is posted on the website. And then, lastly, the Cities United registration, I guess, was overwhelmed, and so that link crashed, and they are not reopening registration until November thirtieth. I think some of you have already gotten this brutality about the dates you wanted to go, but if you haven't, please do so if you want to attend, so we know when to book your hotel and that kind of thing for that conference. And Hometown Connections, those dates don't seem to be working out. I talked with Representative Knight on Sunday, Representative Mayeak last week, and the sixth is not good for either one of them. So, we either need to look at later in the month or possibly at the beginning of the year as to another date for Hometown Connections, if y'all want to proceed. Okay? Not set for me.
Thank you. Mr. Waylon?
I have nothing to say.
Mr. Brock?
Get down with commissioners and state commissioners, whatever down with us. If we need to postpone right now, get it to the first of the year. I'm totally in favor of that, and I realize that if you have schedules, I'll be working on that immediately. Do we need to find a date, and then we'll come back with the date?
However, y'all want to proceed, and we've normally done it that first Tuesday in December, so we can try for Jane Leary. The first Tuesday would be the third.
The first start, they're right.
Yeah, they start right around there, so I don't know.
Start what?
Their legislative session at the Capitol. So, it did.
We'll reach out and see if we can get it.
I'll sign with them and get back with you.
Anything else, Mr. Brock?
I want to say wow.
So, they'll, they'll be going up that weekend.
I want to say wow. This little lady right here has done a hell of a job in the last twelve months, better than most folks people have done in two years. She, she's there every minute, every time. She knows what she's talking about. It's good for me, and I'm sure that girl will say the same thing. It's good working with you, girl. It really is. What I want to say is happy Thanksgiving. New year. And have a two thousand and twenty-three, right?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-five, twenty-three. She's done great right now.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. Commissioner Flowers?
No comment.
Commissioner Tinsley?
I would like to recognize two of our staff members. I had a issue with a street light. I contacted Ms. Freeman. It was repaired, contacted this morning, it was repaired this afternoon, and also a real hot deal, there was an issue there with a large puddle, and contacted Ms. Eller, and this morning it was repaired, and we just have some great employees in this city. We're, we're, we're blessed. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. McCord?
I'm all in the same lines. I want to thank Chief Fire Department. Of course, you know my son was in a horrific car accident, and the praise report is he's walking without crutches now. He went and purchased a car today, so he's no way up there. When he first got home, I had to call on the fire department to get him a set house, and they came out, and were very uplifting, talked to him, and made him feel good, even though it was just temporary, what he was going through. They were very nice to him, so Chief, I want to thank you and your guys. It came right away as soon as I called. Secondly, and lastly, we lost an icon in our community, Mr. Roger Miller, who was a funeral home director here in Griffin for several years. He was a noble with the Sanic Lodge. Just a pillar of our community. He is going to be truly missed and with the reverence to show he served faithfully, I think it was the Airport Authority.
They need to donate.
Land is owning Airport Authority. Wasn't very mobile, but he was, he was there, and it meant a lot to our community, his service to our community, both in his professional life and also as a member of City Board. So, rest in peace to Mr. Roger Miller.
Do you have to rescind my corporate? And I just wish you very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you to our guests for coming out. You're always welcome to join us six o'clock, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, except in December. God bless each of you, and until next time, we'll see you then. With that being said, being considered executive session, send OCGA fifty-fourteen-two-one for the purpose of consulting the meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or the officer or employee, or which the agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved in pursuit of OCGA section five, zero dash fourteen, three, B, two, for the purpose of discussing, ordering, upon appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. Do we have a motion to approve executive? Mr. McCord with a motion, make a second. By Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by joining us in the rear room.
Come on, man, we got work to do, dawg. You ain't got time to be out here politicking. Uh, no, you see, I'm not going to grab you, look. Um, let me ask you, do you need to stay? Let me ask you.
Hey, guys, thank you.
They got it. They're good.
Daddy and Mama don't talk. So Daddy and stepmama and brother.
Where are they coming from?
I think it's going wrong with you. I do, I'll be there.
Okay.
A month.
I know. He sold a piece of shit by the damn Ford.
Oh, have a listen to your wife.
So she... No, that's... That's a real tomorrow. They're like... They're like, "Let me get the tables set up." "I'm moving to the day market." Hi, that's your home.
Hi. Five now.
Yeah. She still... But she's not... She's already got a child. How much?
Ah, okay, nice. So when does he expect to be in power?
Um, he's got over a couple of studios. He's working together.
Okay.
Um... In regale.
Okay. Summary.
Like summary.
Very nice.
Congratulations.
That was exciting. Uh, we're excited.
All right, y'all. I'll leave the house to God.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Well, I was thinking... You didn't even argue with this man all week. What are you doing this three hours since we got in here? We honestly don't think it takes too long. I'm like, why did you come this morning? We could've got through. At least two days.